Good morning. We're going to call the meeting to order at this time for August twentieth. First item is the approval of the agenda, and I do not see any corrections or additions to the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. The next item is citizens to be heard for something that's not on the agenda, and I don't see anyone in the audience for that, so we'll go on to the approval of the minutes for August sixth.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a clarification of the minutes if I could, please.
Sure.
On page three, two thousand fourteen budget update, Commissioner Campbell recalled that the previous point five position was funded with federal dollars which expired. We never funded a point five position at all. What I was referring to was the dollars that, what was the name of that core project that came in, where we had the help from the federal people on the four H? What was the name of that program that they?
Can you stand me?
No. But anyway, anyway, we were, that point five position, the program, the position was never there, but the program itself was being run by, through a federal program. I just want that clarification because-
But, but there was, at one time there was a halftime-
Yeah, but not this, not, not in the context that we're talking about in these minutes. You know-
Anything else on that then?
No, that's it. So I just want that clarified.
Okay. Any further corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor say aye. Carried. Next we will pay our bills. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The vendors will be happy. This time we have Lake Agassiz Regional Library Director Liz Lynch and Megan Krieger, who is the Moorhead Director. Is that correct, Megan? Why don't you both come up and have a chair?
Chair.
And I see Megan got my email to wear blue polka dots today, so.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome. Nice to have you with us, both of you.
Thanks for having us.
Liz, you are on.
All right. Well, thank you so much for having me here, inviting me here today. It's nice to meet all of you, and I've met several of you before, but it's nice to see all of you again. And I really appreciate this opportunity to talk about the Lake Agassiz Regional Library, the locate, or the service locations in Clay County, and then, of course, the two thousand and fourteen budget request from Lake Agassiz Regional Library. I'd first like to share some information with you about Lake Agassiz Regional Library. I have only been in this position since the first of the year, and I don't want to assume what people may or may not know about Lake Agassiz Regional Library. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a spiel about Lake Agassiz. But in Minnesota, all counties are required to be members of, according to Minnesota statute, all counties are required to be members of regional library systems. And so approximately fifty years ago, the counties of Polk, Clearwater, Norman, Menomone, Clay, Becker, and Wilkin got together and they formed the Lake Agassiz Regional Library System. At that time, any existing city libraries within those counties also became signatories of the Lake Agassiz Regional Library. And so the cities that are also signatories include Moorhead, Crookston, Detroit Lakes, Breckenridge, and then later Menomone came on as well. So Lake Agassiz Regional Library really has twelve funding members or signatories, and they are the primary funding entities of Lake Agassiz Regional Library. So Laurel is a consolidated library system, which means that we share all of our resources. We often refer to ourselves as one library because we have one collection of materials that is shared across twenty-three service locations across the region, the thirteen branches and ten link sites. In Clay County, there are two branches, two libraries, the Holly Public Library and the Barnesville Public Library, and then there's also a link site in Yulin. And this consolidated model really allows us to share all of our resources so we can really maximize our services and what we offer to the public. I hope you've all had an opportunity to visit the Barnesville, Holly, and Yulin, Lake Agassiz Regional Library location.
I haven't seen Yulin. Where is that located?
It's, it's located in the community center.
Okay.
And all three locations are fantastic locations. I shouldn't have favorites, but Barnesville is one of my favorite branches in the entire region because if you go into Barnesville anytime after three thirty, I've spent quite a bit of time there, if you go in there anytime after three thirty, you can see up to thirty people lounging around in the Barnesville Public Library. It's not that big of a library, but it is packed with individuals of all ages in the evenings. It's just incredible. It's truly a community gathering place. If you go to the Holly Library, the Holly Library is a great resource as well for the community. It's a little bit different from Barnesville. You might go in and you might see about ten people hanging out in the Holly Library. Maybe you'll see people using the public computers or the wireless access. But the interesting thing about Holly is that must be a community of readers because that door is a revolving door. People walk in to return their books and they're checking out that many more books. It is non-stop. So it's not necessarily the place where everyone's hanging out, but it's definitely a very active place as far as using the materials. And then the Yulin Library, a link, or excuse me, the Yulin Link. A link is not a library. It has limited service. However, it is a link for that community to the rest of the Lake Agassiz Regional Library System. So any services offered by Lake Agassiz Regional Library are accessible by the folks in Yulin through their link site, and it's a, quite an active place as well. In your packet, you do have a library card application, and if you don't have a library card from your, from the Lake Agassiz Regional Library, I urge you to go into your local link or your local branch and sign up for a library card. You can do it in Moorhead, sign up for a card in Moorhead as well. And once you have the Lake Agassiz Regional Library card, the nice thing is that you can use them in all of these different locations. And when you go in to get your library card, just take a look around and you'll see that the library is one of the few places in the community where you will see individuals of all ages, all educational backgrounds, and all economic backgrounds. It is truly a place that is open to everyone in the community. There's not a whole lot of places like that anymore, so it really is a great place. Also, let's see, in your packet, I've included information about the two thousand and fourteen preliminary budget. And as you may or may not know, Lake Agassiz recognized that from the years two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve, that cities and counties were going through a tough time with their budgets. And at that time, even though the Lake Agassiz Regional Library expenses were going up and up and up, Lake Agassiz Regional Library did not ask for an increase from cities or counties for those, in those four years. And instead, Lake Agassiz turned to the reserves. The reserves have been depleted, and it's now time for us to get back on track. You'll see that we're asking for about a eight percent increase this year, and we would prefer to be in a position where we ask for small but steady, modest increases year after year. But the reality is, is that we need to get back on track because we don't want to repeat what just happened in the past six years. You know, I don't want the signatories of Lake Agassiz, of Lake Agassiz Regional Library to feel that Lake Agassiz is a burden. I really don't want the signatories to feel that way. But the reality is that the counties and the cities need to take ownership as the primary funding entities again. I want the signatories to be proud to be members of Lake Agassiz Regional Library System and to feel confident that your funding is going to good use and to be proud that you as a signatory is contributing to the well-being of your communities. This is money well-spent. If you're curious about how we come up with the funding, we do use a formula called the eighty-ten-ten, and it's based on eighty percent borrower transactions, ten percent population, and ten percent property valuation. Now, in the case that the full request is not met, then this would be an opportunity to discuss what could possibly happen in Clay County to the three service locations. And so if the current funding request is not met, what would most likely happen is that the Barnesville Library would probably see a nine percent reduction in service hours. Holly would probably see about a twelve percent reduction in service hours. Yulin, thirty-three percent reduction. It would be an overall reduction of about twelve point two percent in service hours. You know, I just, again, want to say thank you so much for letting me come here today to see all of you again, talk to you about Lake Agassiz Regional Library. And I know that Lake Agassiz Regional Library has really appreciated Clay County support over the years. Lake Agassiz thanks you. I thank you, and you're definitely the community members in the service locations. Thank you as well. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Liz, a couple of questions. You mentioned thirty-three percent in Holly, pardon me, in Yulin would probably take place.
Mm-hmm.
How many days are they open a week now?
Three days.
So that, it would be open two days.
Two days, yes.
And Barnesville, is it nine percent?
Barnesville is nine percent, yes.
All right. And how many days a week are they open now?
They're open five days a week.
And that would-
Go down to four.
Four days per week.
Same with Holly.
All right. Five to four days per week.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Gentlemen, any questions for Liz or Megan?
I have a couple of questions. Who owns the buildings that they're in? Are they leased?
The cities.
The cities own them, provide them for the library?
Yes. Yep, as part of the Lake Agassiz Regional Library agreement, the cities are responsible for the buildings.
And the same is true of Moorhead?
Yes.
Okay. Looking here at the, at the grants, the state has cut, has made a major cut, it looks like, in basic support. Is that been, is that been something that's happened other years as well?
It's my understanding that it is. However, we're still waiting to hear what's going to happen for two thousand and fourteen. Those numbers are not out yet, but it's, it's definitely gone down over the years. And we're hoping to stay steady this year rather than going backwards.
You've got five hundred and twenty for two fourteen, or twenty fourteen though, so that's what you're anticipating, a drop for under grants? Says your request is five twenty, and that's twenty-three thousand less than two thousand.
Oh, yeah, I guess we are anticipating a little bit, but we're hoping. I mean, these are just guestimates at this time, so.
For the questions, gentlemen.
I guess I'm confused a little bit about the budgets from twelve to thirteen. Did we make an increase from twenty-four to, two twenty-four to two forty-two between?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't flat?
No, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve.
And twelve was flat?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
What constitutes your increase in your budget? Because I see you're going from two million two to two million three. I'm just curious what, is that mostly like COLAs for staff? No?
No, not quite.
Insurance?
Insurance, we actually just saw a nineteen percent increase. We had budgeted for a ten percent increase. We have, in, the libraries are not inexpensive to operate, and we work with a lot of vendors and a lot of subscriptions, and though, we see increases annually.
John?
Was, it sounded like part of the problem would have been that in the last few years you were using reserves.
Yes.
And if you don't use reserves this year, I mean, that's, that's a part of the, of the increase.
And we're working hard on our end as well to figure out how we can streamline and see what we can do without, we're not just going out and asking the signatories for increases without looking at the way we operate as well.
John, are you done?
Yeah.
I have one. Under the other revenue here, you have a line item that says fund balance slash shortfall.
Yes.
And you're, in two thousand and fourteen, that number is two hundred and forty-six thousand. Can you explain that to me, what that is?
Sure. Well, this, this amount is what we've been using out of our reserves. And so we've actually found ways to cut ninety-three thousand so that we're not-
So you were still, even with these increases, you were still looking at going into your reserves by two hundred and forty-six thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And where, where, where would we find out what you have in reserves? I don't see that anywhere on here.
Oh, I could provide that information to you.
I mean, you can maybe just do a follow-up through Brian or something.
Sure. Sure.
And I know today Liz is also going to be in Bagley and Menomone and the proposed, like usually cuts, but that's what they would be if the signatories do not come through with what the request is. This is not just Clay County. This is all counties, all websites, all libraries.
But, but according to what you just said, so, so if Clay County didn't do the eight percent request, the consequences for Clay County would be, the Clay County sites would be impacted.
Yes, with the exception of Moorhead.
With the exception of Moorhead.
Yeah. That's correct.
Anything else for Liz or Megan?
What would happen if, what would happen if Moorhead didn't make it? Forty thousand increase.
Then Moorhead would see cuts specifically in Moorhead.
Okay.
Whether that be personnel or hours of service or-
Okay. All right. Well, this is, it gives a clearer picture. It's helpful. Thank you.
I would just like to know what that reserve number is as well.
Sure.
Liz?
Yes.
Megan, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Say hello to all of our friends in Bagley and Menomone.
I will.
Nice report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our friend Dave Overbow looking for approval to fill maintenance foreman position. Dave, good morning.
Good morning. I was informed last week, I guess, that our current maintenance foreman is going to be resigning to try some new opportunities. It came as quite a shock, you know? And we do have a staff meeting today, so we kind of rolling that out to our staff. He hasn't really been doing a lot of sharing, but I guess I thought it would be, it would be pretty important to our department if we couldn't get permission to start the advertising process as soon as we could and get a replacement, I guess, before the snowballs start flying too fast at us, so. Right now, current maintenance foreman is on step five of the grid, so the new, the new person would be somewhere between step one, hopefully to step three, depending on their experience. So Darren has a calculation worksheet, and through the end of two thousand and thirteen, there should be around about a three thousand dollar savings to our budget. You know, there's going to be a period where we won't have any salary, but he does have two hundred and twenty hours of vacation to be paid out. So there'll be some of that stuff. But it looks like a, you know, a small saving, I guess, to our department throughout the end of the year based on salary, and that's going to be a little bit of a blow. It's, he's been here two, two and a half years, a good employee, starting to really get familiar with the residents and the townships and our work and stuff. It's just too bad that, you know, we've been having so much turnover in that department. It's not only important to the guys that have, you know, the twenty, twenty-plus-year veterans in our department to have some stability, but the experience too.
John?
Do you think it's, is it, is the job, I mean, it's stressful. Is it, is that part of it, or is it, are we underpaying, or what's the-
I think, you know, when our last maintenance foreman left, Brian and I did a nice exit interview, and I guess I didn't really talk to Brian, but I'm assuming you'd be open to that again. And maybe this time, maybe I'll even leave after part of it, maybe we can try to ask that. I don't think this is, I think this has more to do with an opportunity that came up and presented himself, and he needs to be out of the country, actually, for about six months. And our policy doesn't really, I mean, it allows for four weeks of unpaid leave, and then you need to part, actually county board approval to go beyond that. And, you know, it would be all, you know, completely over the winter time, and it would just, it probably wasn't going to work for us to have this, this position vacant for that long of a period. So I think it was kind of an opportunistic type of a reason.
What do you wish, gentlemen?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I, I, I think John's on the right track. I think we, that's, that's a significant position, and it's something that we shouldn't be doing every two years.
Yeah.
Because they're just, they're not even fully, they haven't even fully even learned it yet, so.
Right.
And that's, that's so critical to what everybody, transportation, what everybody does, that we've, we've got to, if, if it's, if it's compensation thing, we've got to get that figured out.
Maybe we can try that.
If it's competitive then.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Campbell too. We did have a long conversation with the former one when he exited, and frankly, it is a very, very busy job. As you can see here, seventeen people report to him. In my frame of mind, if they were all in one shop, that might be one thing, but when they're spread out through the county like they are, I think we do need to get a stronger internet, some leads. I know you do use leads in their absence, but it's only in the foreman's absence, and I think we need to get some kind of lead system going to relieve some of the stress. We saw that last winter, and we had a long discussion about that, the hours that he accumulated when we had those heavy, heavy snowstorms. Some of that responsibility needs to be shifted. So I think that's part of it.
Is there such a thing of maybe starting to look at a, maybe a north and a south or something to alleviate some stuff? I, you know, you'd have to kind of see how that could work in your budget, but-
Yeah. I know we, we did, in the last five years or so, we've kicked around several different types of ways, maybe even having like our, our sign foreman who's not real busy in the winter time because he can't pull a lot of posts in, but maybe utilizing him as some sort of a, maybe he's kind of a north, north side foreman too. But I think this is a very good topic, and maybe we'll just put it on our highway committee for future discussions, and I'll try to come up with some scenarios, and we'll do some brainstorming and come up with some plans.
John?
Well, it seems to me too that he's only been here a little over two years, and to have not used five weeks of vacation, you know, I mean, it indicates that he's not able to get away very often.
Yeah.
How much, I mean, that's, that's a lot of, has he had any vacation? I mean, in two years, should he have had more than five weeks?
Well, the position generally does put in a lot of overtime in the summertime. Like, a couple of weeks ago, we had a bunch of asphalt millings hauled to one of our, our county pits, so he worked on, it was either Friday or Saturday, completely on overtime, blending this with gravel and things like that. And I guess my point is they, they get a lot of flex time, so he does get some time off, but it's all flex time. You know, he's, he's burning this time that he didn't get paid for, and I think he's got a significant amount of flex time that will get unused after he leaves, like to the tune of one hundred and sixty hours. You know, and he's been burning all summer long, so it's been kind of hard. We talked a little bit, and I think the highway committee and Brian and I, about what we could do af, you know, after the snow melted, he had two hundred and forty hours of flex time. And I didn't really want him gone all summer long, so what he did is he kind of burned ten to twenty hours a week. He's been doing that for the last six or eight weeks. So it's been kind of tough. We've been with, you know, we've been kind of only having him halftime all summer long anyway, so it is a little bit of an issue. It's, it's hard. When having the bad-
Well, if we're having him do that much, that much overtime at certain times, then we need to, we need to relook at, at, at redesignating something there to avoid that.
Is that all flex time, or is it some paid time, or it's all flex?
Yeah. It's all on a one-for-one basis, kind of, it's kind of a, I think Brian and I, all department heads might be working on that a little bit. Right now, it's, it's kind of a little bit on the loose side, but it's, it's a lot of time. The position really, it used to be a non-exempt position up in, you know, about five, six years ago, we had the comp time change. This position was a non-exempt, and they did get paid for it, and maybe that's an option to look at too. It's just, you know, if you could regulate it easily or regularly, it'd be one thing, but it's just, you know, it depends on the weather, it depends on the construction projects, and it's hard to just take this position out of the equation and have other people running all the equipment and making all the decisions, so.
We have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dave?
Thank you.
Got it. Motion's carried. Darren, approval of personnel policy change for compliance with recent amendments to the state statutes.
Morning. What this is, is the laws changed effective August first, two thousand and thirteen in regards to the authorization to use, use of sick leave. And what the state did was added some people to that. And so what I'm here today to do is to update our personnel policy to reflect those changes in the state law that took effect. And basically what the state did, it did a couple of things. First off, it, it added the availability of sick leave to be used when an adult, child, sibling, grandparent is having the same serious health incidents that a employee would have. And also, we took this to the PIC, I think it was our last PIC meeting, maybe the one before, and it was discussed at that point too, and so this is where that language came up. I changed the language just a little bit, but then sent that back out to the PIC committee, and so they had gotten to see this and said that this language would, would be appropriate. But in that PIC committee, we also thought and felt that adding grandchildren as well, since there's a lot of people that take care of their grandchildren these days in the, in the dynamics of family life. And so we added the adult, child, sibling, and grandparent, and then grandchild as well. What the state law also did though, is it did allow us to set a limit of a hundred and sixty hours, or at least a hundred and sixty hours, rather than it being unlimited for these additional people. So in order to try to make it as simple as possible for our personnel policy and still make it understandable, and still put a little bit of a restriction on these new people that they've added, hence the, the wordage in the, in the personnel policy. Okay?
See, Darren, so when we talk about a hundred and sixty hours, it, the employee still would have had to accumulate that many hours.
Right. Everything has to be accumulated.
Yeah, so if somebody only accumulated eighty, the eighty would apply.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So they can also take vacation time for this though, Ken?
Sure.
Okay. And when does the twelve, it says a hundred and sixty hours per twelve-month period. When does the twelve-month period start?
Um, we're going to use our, like we do for an FLMA, a rolling twelve-month period. So basically, you, you wouldn't take, you could take a hundred, technically, you could take a hundred and sixty hours in November, December, and then turn around and take another hundred and sixty hours in January, February, but we're going to use it, and the laws allow us to use it as a rolling calendar. So it would be-
A twelve-month period.
Twelve-month period, yeah.
From the day you start?
From the day you start. From the day you start, yeah. Exactly.
We have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. I carried, and thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Budget discussion. Brian and First Lady, okay?
He's the last, yeah.
That's why you're here, though.
Proceed.
Well, he left, he proceeded, he didn't...
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I've got several documents here to go through today. Maybe we can take them one by one, though. And the first one we'll hand out is the new requests. And the suggested, now, the review that Laurie and I did with these. So, we can go with those and, and see what your thoughts are on these, and then we'll move on to some other considerations and then go to a, a final summary. But we'll just skim over it real quick. I think you've had exposure to many of these information services. They came in with a request of 50,000. We've talked about that. We recommend that, and, and the department is in, in support of this, that, that the new surface service, the new software be purchased from the Internal Service Fund. And Laurie is comfortable with this happening, and then we plan on making 10 $10,000 payments. In other words, to make up the 50,000 that we purchased it with, and then also to accumulate another 50,000 beyond that. Because this software gets purchased, it was back in the 90s, is what they told us when, when, when they presented, this was Mark Sloan that presented to you in regards to this. So, that was our thought there, and we're certainly open to any other thoughts on it, too, so.
So, in essence, that takes 40 grand out of the current year's...
Yes, it does. This year's request. Yep, yep. Technology services, Tim Dent, he came in and asked for $20,000 increase to the Internal Service Fund. It is falling behind. He said it's continuously falling behind, and last year we did increase that 35,000, and in communication with him, he felt cutting that request in half would certainly be acceptable. We think it's important that we, at the rate that we're using technology these days, we have to, to maintain and we have to increase that. But we felt that that was a wise move as well. Department of Motor Vehicle, you, I know there, we had discussion on that last time, but what Laurie has suggested there is we would cut that funding request in half because, excuse me, with the remodeling project and the workstation's improvements, and by the time we get through the construction period and into the new year, that would be the time to put that person on. And then the idea would be to put him on full-time mid-year, so that it would go into the next year. So, you have to realize the obligation is coming down.
The other, the next year would be instead of 22...
Be a full, yes, that's correct. That's correct.
That works for you.
Yep, absolutely.
And Veteran Services now, our Veteran Service Officer, Tom, has been out of service for a while. He's, he's, he's getting some medical attention for some things. And I have not discussed this with him. He's been gone for at least two weeks now, but he had requested the 85, $8,560 for a contingency plan for the, to, to have in reserve in the event that he needs part-time hours. And I guess I feel, I've talked with him a little bit early on about this, but I guess I feel that if that need is there, he can come, and we'll certainly, we would, the board would more than consider his request if that was needed.
And I, and I, I think, I felt that same consensus here that, you know, and I, and I pointed out the one thing that, he had that one discrepancy that mine I am in there, too, that was significant, that probably would've made that up anyway. I think we, there were, the health insurance increase was like 30-some percent or something.
Yes, yes, there was an...
He had the health insurance in there for his part-time person, so we took that off.
Yeah, yeah, so, but having taken that out, that certainly made up for room monies.
Yeah. And the planning zoning request, there was $2,500 in there, and that was something that the board had requested for the EDA, and there will be a fee attached to that. And if we have activity there, we can certainly cover that as well. So, the sheriff, they were asking for $5,700 to, for some part-time hours, and in our discussion with them, they feel that can be absorbed into the budget, so that was removed from the new request as well. Corrections, that, you may want some discussion on that. We, they feel very strongly that the position needs to be filled, or they're not filled, but there needs to be a new position established, and it's for the coordination of the out-of-state, the out-of-county boarding. They feel they're just falling behind right now in the coordination of courts and attorneys and visitations and, and the scheduling things. That is left in, the full-time position. The only dollars that were removed, were removed $35,000 because we're going to go ahead and plan to purchase the software upgrade, because it's security equipment out of the capital improvement fund. But we also left $6,500 in there, too, for the Internal Service Fund, so that we won't be put in this pinch in the future, that, that it'll be budgeted for, and, and the funds will be available there, so.
Brian, this, the safety equipment, that is, is a capital expenditure.
It's, yes, yes, I would say, yes.
And it qualifies, it would qualify for those funds we have.
Yes, it would.
Do we have to amend that, do we have to amend that to include that, or is it...
No.
Language already there.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, we feel that the language is already there to cover that. Would you want to, or did you wanna schedule something in the future as far as that discussion of that position? Are you comfortable with, or should we just go through the whole works and then see where we come out? Okay, that'd be good. Juvenile detention left just as, as is. And the extension, we had discussion last time, and we realized Commissioner Everett was not here. But after, based on the discussion of the board, this is not necessarily a recommendation, this is just putting it down as we discussed, that we did remove that halftime position. And they, too, are in the midst of selecting a new 4-H coordinator, and the future is probably, I don't wanna say a little uncertain, but we have high hopes of, of getting, hopefully they get the right person in that can coordinate these activities. And the other requests that were in the new request were moved over to the regular, a light item budget. In other words, there was a little increase in the budget to include that kitchen and in some office supplies and things. So, it was removed out of the request, and so, I guess keep that one in mind. Buildings and grounds, I've had extensive discussions with Robbie and Georgia on that. We feel that we can do some things to improve the efficiencies there. We've had some absenteeisms, a turnover, and we do have some dollars still left in the budget, and we need to utilize the dollars that we have in the budget before we're asking for more. They would still like to see this considered by you folks, but that's, Laurie, I can say we're, we'll say that's our recommendation on this one, so. The new correctional facility, we, we did reduce $20,000 on that for discussion, although I think that really deserves some more discussion. That was a priority with, with the county. I'll say the county commissioners and the department heads, when we met for a retreat, was to establish funding source there, so, but we were trying to be somewhat fair across the board when we went through these, and I think that deserves more discussion, though, and see where you guys wanna be at with, with establishing fund at 42.5 or 50 or whatever. That's the changes to the, the new request, and they dropped them from 400, and I think it was 400 and some thousand to 281,000. And if you go through there, you'll notice that most of those dollars are in corrections. They're, they're, the corrections and juvenile detention and the correctional facility. So, out of that, now they're at 281,000, in excess of 200,000, is to deal with our overcrowding problem in our jail and things. So, we just kinda have to keep that in perspective as well. The next thing I would like to hand out is we've gone through and looked at the different departments, and these are some considerations for you folks to think about. And I'll have to say, I think, well, maybe there'll be one when we get down to the bottom, are in agreement with the department heads that we have talked to them about. So, starting out with first category there, highway, and I know this was expressed with, with valid concern last time, we don't wanna be replacing the wheelage dollars with other dollars, but Dave came in with some suggestions on this, and he felt that there could be some reduced road maintenance cost, bringing it back to last year's level of $250,000. There'd be no increase over last year. And remember, we, we constantly talked about, there may be some slight changes, but with all of these, with one or few exceptions, these are not cutting back from last year's level. It is a reduction in the increase that was requested. And I think we have to keep remembering that, that, that we're, we don't wanna cut services on this, but we wanna just be more efficient. Engineering consulting...
Brian, on that, I just make clear now, that this isn't the, this is from a line item within his budget for maintenance. This is not the, 'cause we had gone from 300 to 350 for county impro, in the county road improvement fund, right? There was a separate fund for that purpose, of which then, I think in 2015, it's scheduled to go to 400,000.
Right. Now, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, you're in the right area, but no, that was at 350, and it stayed at 350 for next year. Yes, that is not...
We raised it last year.
We did raise it last.
Raised it last year, yes, so that, that...
So, this is actually a line item...
This is a line item, where Dave felt he could, could cut some dollars.
Thank you.
Engineering, consulting, and technical services, he said that they've done so much design that they don't feel they'll need all of those dollars next year, and was suggesting a $25,000 cut there. That is probably the one item within the suggestions that is a reduction. Rightaway costs reduced closer to last year's budget of 170,000. He's requesting 190,000 on that, but it's a $10,000 reduction. Information services, there was, Mark had, was asking for $5,000, which was quite an increase in the training request. We are still leaving $2,500 in there. We feel that training within that area is very, very important, but it's a $2,500 reduction. We reduced the sign replacement. They had $6,000 budgeted in information services, and they haven't been spending $6,000 in, to replace the signs, and we really feel that should be moved to the highway shop anyway, because it's the sign people that are putting that up. So, we reduced that to 3,000, and we'll remove the $3,000 to highway budget.
Why is, why is there still money left in there if they're moving it to the highway shop?
There's not money left in there. It shows a reduction of their request of 3,000.
Or proposed, yes.
Yes, yes. No, there's no money left in there.
So, that's... It was primarily for new residents, I suppose, or if the road greater happened, if you knock one down or whatever.
Damage, yes. Yep, that's, that's, they all fall within that category.
But in the past, that's, that's fallen under...
GIS.
GIS's budget.
Yes.
So, we're removing that line item from GIS and putting it in the highway.
Putting it in highway, yes.
Okay, so the 3,000 will be a new line item in...
In highway.
In highway.
Yes. Yep. The sheriff, they had, they had budgeted funds for the portable radios, which they have purchased with other funds over recent years, and they, again, requested $20,000 in that. In meeting with them, they felt that they will still be purchasing portable radios with some other funds if they can, but they didn't wanna leave dollars in for at least two of the portable radios. So, that's $6,000, the reduction of $14,000. Jail, other professional services, the experience has shown they've not spent to the level of, of their budget, so they suggested reducing $2,000. And then prisoner boarding, when we discussed this, they are max on prisoner boarding, so that's not a variable cost anymore. That is a known fact, 'cause we are full capacity, but they had not reduced the six that are definitely going out. So, when we brought that to their attention, they wanted to save some of the dollars of those six going out because of maybe breakfasts or something, but was a reduced of $5,400 there. Public health, Kathy is billing 0.2 of Gina's time and 0.2 of Mary's time to the ship grant, because they're doing work within that ship grant, which is $25,000, and also they're billing Otter Tail County, where we're gonna be first for Mary and Christina's time, because of the new cooperation that they are being done. Detox is adding expected revenue of $62,000, and remember, that is financed through social services, though. Detox is, the public health runs it, but, and that's why it's just noted here, you'll see it in social services reductions of $62,000.
Brian, on the public health, Gina and Mary's time, two FTEs, the ship grant, there's still 100% Clay County employees, though, are they not?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
That is just revenue. As social services, Rhonda's really done a, a job of looking at the programs, and, and we spent several, I'll have to say, hours going through these programs again, but she feels that she can show an increase in revenue for Medicaid waiver cases management. There's three different accounts under that, but that's accounts for an additional revenue of $158,000. Medicaid recoveries that have been trending stronger than expected, so she expects a revenue increase of $15,000 there over what her budget was, is a proposed budget. Out-of-home placements have been trending a little bit lower. You see, there's lots of dollars there, 1.7 million dollars, but she feels she can reduce $40,000 there in the request. Detox, the, the revenue is showing up from North Dakota right now, so that is a $62,000 reduction in expense, but it's revenue coming in. Remember, this isn't a spreadsheet, this is showing you what the positive effect it has on the budget. In case in revenue for special needs-based care, she reduced that, or increased the revenue by $15,000. Children's mental health of $9,000, children's mental health screening grant, $21,000. Adult Rule 79 mental health cases of $30,000. Day training and rehabilitation services for adults with disabilities, $34,480. That was a total sum, I think of, I think it was in the three, around $300,000 that I've added up again. I've got it off in my worksheets. But what she did discuss and, and...
Understood.
Oh, she is. Was that these are really, she's really bringing these down to a level of the hope that we don't go to the reserves to fill in gaps there this year. But if you do, that's, that's a conscious decision to do that, but realizing that that gap will not be, be possible to make up, she doesn't feel, so. Family service center, there was a $10,000 increase in revenue that, that we do get from social services of two part-time people that help out over there. Soil and water did reduce their request from 4%, Commissioner Gross, to, to a 3% increase. County program aid, we did get the confirmation, I mentioned that to you a week or two ago, of 20,000, $27,000 increase there. MCIT dividend was, the actual is $178,000 greater, which is real positive. The flood study, we talked to you about that, decreased from $145,000 request to 95, which is a $50,000. The survey, we left stagnant. We had increased it 10,000, but we're down to the 40,000 again at 10,000. Now, here is probably the one that you'll need to have some discussion about, and that is the Lake ABC library. You don't certainly have to make a decision on that today, but you had a presentation on that today. As a... As we went through these, Lori and I talked about the fact that we're running within that three to four percent range right now with our levy. Soil and water reduced to three percent. Most of the departments, we tried to use that as a guideline, that two to three percent, and that's the guideline we use there. Perfectly understandable. I think you need to talk about that, because there is a reduction of services. And I do have just the letter that I did receive from them in regards to their request, and that was pretty much handled today with the presentation, but I had this copied, so I wouldn't waste the paper. But, you know, that's something that, it reduces at thirteen thousand dollars. It's a three percent increase, and I think sometimes that's where we, we talk, we say, well, if we can't give the twenty thousand, this is what goes away. Well, what if there's somewhere in between? And, but libraries are very near and dear. The minimum maintenance of effort is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and this year they're requesting two hundred and sixty-two. The historical and cultural society, I visited with, with them on the phone yesterday morning, and we reduced their request from one eighty-seven, suggested request down to one eighty-three. She was very happy with that, any consideration that the board would, would grant them. That would be a three percent increase as well, that she would be very appreciative. So those, these considerations for changes are eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and then the, the new requests dropped about two hundred, oh, not quite two hundred thousand dollars. So that's in that million-dollar range or, or so. And so with that, we'll pass out this new, and hopefully you feel improved layout. And I didn't put it on here, but I need to remind you again that the social services down there, that was with the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction. When she's showing a three point eight percent increase, that is not an increase from what was authorized last year. In fact, I would have to say that is a reduction when you add the four hundred and fifty thousand in there. So what you'll see is, I, total spread levy after the, the CPA, the county program aid is figured in, of three point three eight. We have a new construction growth of one percent, so it's a net levy effect of two point three eight. Now, I, I know, I still ask that question, how about the levy limits and different things along that line? The debt payments are, went outside of the levy, so we were looking at, we felt we could go to about three point two five on that, but as I told you last week or the week before, that Lori has been in constant communication, I'll say, with, with the city and also the Department of Revenue, and we've sent in our paperwork for the, the levy limits, and we'll find out September first what that is. But Lori feels strongly that we're within certainly the levy limits, that we can go. Also, what this budget does in this, in, in past years, at the end of the year, you've done an interfund transfer of anywhere from, I'll say, two hundred thousand, give or take fifty thousand, and you've done that for the last fifteen, twenty years. This eliminates that transfer. So you were taking, say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund to move over to the family service center, and we predict that that will not need to occur. So not only if you were to, if you were to look at that hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, your budget wouldn't be increasing a great deal, but we feel it is time for that to be.
So you budgeted?
Prepared. It is budgeted for it, yes. It's not needed this year, then maybe that's a better way to put it.
Well, you, you budgeted expenses over revenues?
That's right.
For that facility. That's, either that or we've got a windfall of rents coming into the network.
Yeah, no. In, in the past, in the past, I'll say expenses were budgeted over revenues. Now the revenues will meet the expenses.
And in the past, we had a big bond payment, principal payment was, which was not part of these budget line items, and so that was generally in the five hundred thousand dollar, four hundred thousand dollar range, so.
Why is the law enforcement debt retirement increase so much? Aren't they?
Is it twenty percent?
Aren't they pretty much the same every year?
Mr. Chair, that twenty thousand dollar is an increase, and I don't know.
That's with the new bonds we refinanced, those, and so that's, that's the new bonding schedule.
But I thought we got them cheaper. We shortened the number of years, that's what it's.
Well, we shortened the number of years, but the payment, and that's where the confusion is here just a little bit. You'll also see the next line under that, Commissioner Everett, is that the debt retirement on the county projects, that's, that took over the payment that is going away with the law enforcement center and the family service center. And that's why we talk about the, the transfer of funds afterwards, and the depreciation payment that was being made in regards to it, that all rolls together. That's why it's a little bit confusing in regards to that. And I would really like to defer to our accountant for that explanation.
Well, it was, we were making, we were making a principal payment that wasn't part of the budget in the family service center, and so we were using the depreciation, which generally was pretty equal to the bond payment. So it's a paper transfer, or paper expense, not necessarily a cash expense. And so the, the money that we were transferring over to the family service center is now being taken up by the county projects debt retirement. Not exactly the same output.
My, my question was, the word bond came up, where some of the bond money was now being used, the savings and bond payments were being used. Did I misread what was said there?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, yeah, no, no bond money is being used for payments, no.
To buy, to, to offset that increase, or, or the no longer having to transfer?
There you go.
Okay.
It's not bond money, though, but the bond payment has gone away with the family service center after this year.
But, okay, but, but that raises the point, because also in our long-term planning, all those, all those bond payments that were going to be up, our plan was to use a significant portion of that to set aside for a new facility.
That's.
So now are we taking some of that money and using for something else?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
You're, you're the exact questions I had, Commissioner.
Yeah, well.
That was, that was a little confusing to me, but Lori's assured.
Well, I'm assuming you're, you know, we're talking there, right, Lori, with, you know, in our long-term plan for the new facility, is some of these?
Right.
Bond payments came up.
Right, now we're using part of that, that bond payment for these county projects, but it's a very short bond.
Because, because ultimately, you know, I, and we hadn't, we hadn't finally determined what portion of those future bonds would be set aside. Bonds, payments that we saved would be set aside for the facility, but I know we, you know, in our, in our early discussions, we talked about potentially seventy-five percent or something?
That's right.
As a number?
Yep.
To be setting aside for, which goes back to my question to you, or comment regarding your first handout with the new correctional facility, where you, you've knocked twenty thousand off of that, and I, I don't see that as any real big deal there, because where, where we are going to see the real ability to, to deal, that is going to be?
The bond.
From the bond side, and the savings and bond payments that are going to be there.
Yep.
The important thing, I think, that's there is we're sending a message to Department of Corrections, that, that we are starting to establish?
Right.
Some sort of a, a revenue stream to deal with that in the future.
Right, yeah.
So I, you know, I guess where, that's where I wanted to make the comment on the new facility, where I'm, I'm fine with the forty-two five. Again, that's, that's just a small token in what it's going to take to.
Oh, really?
But at least, but at least it's establishing something, some sort of a plan.
Right.
And then I, I do believe that we need to have the discussion soon on these future, when these bonds are paid off then, as to where those, that those funds should be designated for? And what percentage should be designated for that purpose?
Actually, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, this, this switch around in the payment of the family service center clarifies it in my mind a little bit, that, that we are now on a clearer track with those bond payments, because we don't, we won't have the interfund transfer to help pay for that bond. This will be straight up in the future. So maybe, and I know Lori understands it very well, what was taking place in regards to that, but I, I like to see it this way.
And then I, I have just one more question. We found, we found out last week that our increase in health insurance wasn't anywhere nearly as bad as we had anticipated. As a matter of fact, I believe it fell below what we had set aside. And if that's the case, where is that showing up in these changes?
Yeah, we have not, Mr. Chair, we have not put that change in here yet, but what we had set aside was two hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to get the exact numbers from H R as to what our health bill will be for next year. And we think it's going to be very close to that, to, two hundred thousand. It might be five thousand dollars less, it might be five thousand dollars more, but we haven't put those exact figures in there, and we will do that next.
I thought our preliminary, didn't you, didn't you put in ten?
We just put in two hundred thousand dollars, which.
Increase?
Right.
Which is about ten percent?
No, it's about a six or seven percent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last week was eleven percent, and it was three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred nine, yeah.
But that, that ten, or that seven percent or whatever we end up being, half of that is ours and half of that is the employees?
No.
Isn't it?
Well, the increase, but our share of eleven percent increase last year was three hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so we are, we are putting in our share?
That's right. That's exactly right, yeah. It's on a percentage basis, so, yeah.
We didn't add the full increase just to the county share.
That's, that's right.
This was discussed last week evidently, but the Lakes and Prairies request, you see here, the discussion was for nine thousand increase. Their request was for how much?
Nine thousand dollar increase.
Oh, that's what they'd asked for?
That's correct.
And what, does that, I don't see that here to be act on that, or?
You know, there, I would have to say there was a consensus last week at the board to grant the full request.
Yeah, we, we felt that was just too significant to.
I certainly agree.
That should have been in here.
Okay.
I apologize for that, because it was a point of discussion, and I had, it wasn't, it wasn't a new request, so it didn't show up in any of the printouts, but it was a, it was a high percentage increase, but it's, with the satisfactory explanation, so.
Well, I want to comment, I, I think, I think, you know, Lori's worked with you and whoever else, and Rhonda with her, her work on this, it's really, it's really some significant movement to get us to where we need to be by September fifteenth. And I, I'm really liking what I'm seeing so far. I, I still, I still want to see how this compares to the reality of what really happened in thirteen, and, and will we have revenues over expenditures by a significant amount? And if so, then I think we need to take that into consideration as well. But I, I think, I think this is certainly much better than what we had a little while ago. I breathe it easier.
Do you want to discuss the library request that came to us this morning? If they are cutbacks in services, and that'll, if there is, that would basically be our choice. John and Frank are the ones who are going to take a few phone calls on that, I'm sure.
Do we have any idea what the city is doing? I mean, are they going to grant the forty thousand increase?
I don't know.
I think it's fair, and I, I told him I would relay the message. Last Friday, I did receive a phone call from another member of the, of the library board, Commissioner from Becker County, Barry Nelson, and he was just, he wanted to express his support for granting the full request of the eight percent, and he asked that I pass that on to you folks, that the, the library board does support that full request by all of the signatories or all of the counties and the cities to, to make this happen, so.
And of course, being on the library board, I certainly support it.
It's another one of those things, though, where the state is making, continuing to make considerable cutbacks and expecting, you know, to maintain the level of service. And at least just about every, you know, committee that I'm a part of understands that, you know, some of that, you know, has to be shared. You just can't continue to make up every decrease that the state is just continuing to make, you know, every, you know, every year they make a decrease and expect, you know, us to, to make the increase to make up the difference. And, you know, there's a, a breaking point, at least as far as I'm concerned, where that just can't be done, so.
Yeah, you know, I was really, I was really glad to, to get that report today, and, you know, the one thing that I, I've noticed in these communities, when the public has been allowed to voice support for public libraries, it's overwhelmingly in favor of. And you can look just recently to the other side of the river, when they, they actually did a, a vote on, on new construction for libraries, and a, and a new tax to do it, and it was just overwhelmingly approved. And, you know, I, I made the comment, you know, that we've, when we make these cuts, we've really been able to do it in ways where, where we do, do not diminish service. We just have to be creative in, in how we go about doing, a little bit more creative in how we go about doing things. Today, we, we heard testimony that there would be a, a clear reduction in service to two of our communities, or three of our communities, and, and all of them are, are on the eastern part of our county, and we constantly hear how we don't pay attention to the eastern part of the county, and, and this is one area where, where I'm willing to, to keep the, keep those funds there, to keep those facilities open for those residents. Libraries, libraries are important to, not, not on, not only to our youth, it's important to, for our adults' continuing education and our college students, so.
I get, one, one thing I wanted to add, though, is, at least based on her report, did I understand it right, that like last year, they, they took nearly a quarter of a million dollars out of reserves to make their budget?
Right.
And this year, they're doing the same this year?
They're still doing it.
So you guys had served on that, you know, committee or board, how do they plan, I mean, how long can that go? What's the plan? But what's the plan to, to deal with that, if, you know, if you're dipping into, you know, that significant land here reserves?
I can't say how much. I don't, I do not know the exact figures, but I know they have been dipping into reserves because of the four years, but they didn't get any increases from, from the signatories at all. I, I would have to see those figures a little more closely before I can even comment on that. Good point, though.
Well, I definitely, you know, feel too, we just, we really can't afford the cutback in service in those three locations. I, I think we, you know, we're talking, if we're talking thirteen thousand as the, as the cutback from the request, it seems like we should be able to find other places to make that work. We, we really haven't cut services any other place I can think of.
I don't, do you want to entertain a motion at this time to grant the library its full request? Can you get that off, get that on the table?
I, I, Ms. Chair, I, I would suggest we keep the full request in our current budget document as, as proposed.
And then have this part of the?
It's part of the preliminary levy, we'll all know by September fifteenth, but I, I think there's, you know, based on the conversation today, there's probably a very good likelihood that the full amount would stay, but I, I don't know that we should start voting on portions of our budget early. I just think that's good.
What do you think, Brian, do you agree with that?
I have to agree with Commissioner Campbell, I'll let it just progress forward. We got your consensus on it, I think, so.
Probably not a hundred percent, but we have a.
Yeah, the sky could fall down.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm going to relay that to Liz later on this morning, because if she can relay that to Bagley and Norman, that would be okay for you. I have another comment on the surveyor, you know, I don't have any problem with leaving it at the forty thousand, but I have, we talked about doing it in a different way. Is that, if we looked in a closer at that, if we could? If we could make this available to any, any surveyor who's, who puts mark, you know, records and markers, or do we?
I, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Everett, you, you folks did express that after the presentation the other day, and we are do, doing research on that right now. I'm sorry, I don't have an update on that, but we want to check the, the legal ramifications. I did go on site, and there's about a third of the counties within Minnesota that do not appoint a surveyor.
So it's not required?
So it's not obviously required. Now, there might be some action by your board prior to doing that, you may have to pass a resolution, I believe, to, to eliminate that. But if we could, and we're working on that, it just, as you can see, we, we've devoted a lot of time and a lot of stress to, to putting these numbers together and working with everybody. And Jenny's working on that a little bit, and I'm doing some research on it as well, so we'll, we'll, certainly that's on a front burner to, to get, bring you some-
Seems like if we could make it so that we, if we identify a certain amount of money for each marker that's in-
That's right.
We can, we make headway at least every year in where we're going.
Yeah. Might be, might be a more efficient way to get those corners established, and we need to talk about that. And, and we have talked about that. Dave has, has been very good, over Bo, in communicating with the surveyor over this last year. He's really taken it upon himself to, to make that a project, which is a real problem.
And as I said before, that the, the whole naming of a, a surveyor gives a, county surveyor gives a false impression as to who he is, and I think, or who they are.
On all this, is that wheelage tax that we approved a couple months ago, is that figured in in this budget as an increase somewhere, or?
Well, we will be putting it in the budget because of a revenue and an expenditure, but is it figuring in here in how we're, no. I think our, my, my direction was, I felt that, that you guys passed that wheelage tax for improvements in the road system here, not to, not to supplement the, the budget.
If I, if I can, Commissioner Gross, you know, our Highway Tracking Committee, you know, we, we do our five-year plan, and, and we have a lot of projects that don't make that cut, and so we're always behind in our, our improvement projects. The wheelage tax was designed not, not to be part of the highway budget per se, to reduce other things, but to, to add additional work to get roads done.
Okay.
That's our intent, is that's going to be additional dollars that are going, going to go over and above what we currently budget, that's going to improve our roads at a faster pace that the people use.
Right, that's what I see. I mean, now, there's 30% that's going to municipalities, is it going to townships or is it just going to cities?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, the resolution that you passed was cities. And I think the discussion, first of all, we rea, we moved on this fairly rapidly, and, but I think the logic was in our discussions with the cities is that a lot of the population lives there, and we do reach out in other ways to the rural atmosphere on, on the township roads and different things through contracts and stuff, so. And besides that, if you started diluting that by another 30 townships, there wouldn't be much to, to, to deal with on dollars-wise.
And that, and that 30%, you know, we, that was a resolution that, that we passed with the understanding that the criteria on that would be developed and rec, a recommendation brought from our Highway Tracking Committee. So we don't even have yet in place what the process is going to be for even those cities to be able to come in and get, you know, their share of that 30%.
That's not a yearly dole out, I don't know, or doles, I'm right, that's not a yearly payment.
Well, it'll, it'll be, it'll, it'll be per year on a project basis.
Yes.
You know, and, and the cities can elect, if they want, to let that fund build for a while, if they want to do that, that, you know, or they can, they can, you know, they might have something that they want to, or they might have a project that they might have to do over five years, and they might want to use those dollars to pay for that over a five-year period, but.
So is our 70% just going to go for county roads, or is any township roads included in that, or just county roads?
Well, right now, right now, the intent is for county roads, because, I mean, and even that, it's just a drop in the bucket versus what it would cost for us to deal with just our roads.
It might, it might mean an extra mile or two a year, a road construction, you know.
No, I know, it doesn't go very far. I realize that, I was just trying to see what the townships get out of this, or whatever.
They get to use our county roads.
In fact, Mr. Chair, in regards to the wheelage tax, I, I mentioned last week that I'd had a administrator's meeting. A lot of counties have passed the wheelage tax, and there was discussion at the administrative meeting, I won't necessarily name the county that made the statement, but they are looking at the sales tax, because they were a lakes area county, and they feel they can raise a lot of revenue through a sales tax by people that utilize their roads that come in seasonally. So, and they'll raise a lot more dollars, so it isn't that they weren't supportive of the wheelage tax, they just feel that the sales tax is-
Better alternative.
-is a better alternative.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. First Lady, anything more from you?
Just one, and Commissioner Campbell hit on it, this was a lot of work from the department heads. They really took your, your direction at heart and, and looked at their budgets very seriously, and, and so I want to really compliment them.
You're talking about those $100,000.
I know.
Send our appreciation to the-
Brian, that's significant one that's still there, it deals with corrections, and I, I, I've been kind of harping about this for quite some time in terms of that transportation thing. I think we have to develop a whole new transportation plan that deals with these transferring, because I think there could end up being more involved with that than just the labor. I think we have to start, do we have the proper vehicle system in place to-
Is that the request for the, the full-time employee, that's strictly for coordinating transportation?
Well, it was not all.
Yeah.
Because part of it was that other program.
You know, I mean, there, there are six beds we lost, and it just seems to me that, you know, a full-time employee, you know, I mean, maybe there's a need for a part-time employee, or, you know, and, you know, somebody moving in to spend more time coordinating this, but, you know, the other thing we talked about is, you know, what other options are there for this? Is there a contract with one other jail, you know, that will-
Provide transportation.
-where we'll get a better deal, and we need less coordination then too, because everybody would be going to, you know, one location. I mean, there, there must be some options out there besides just, you know, increasing everything like that, so.
And I think that's a very fair observation, and I, I, Julie and the sheriff have answered some of those questions, because that was an exact discussion we had when we met with them. And they really have felt they've fallen behind on this and this transportation. So I think it would probably be better just if we could schedule a meeting with the sheriff's office. I know they'd be very receptive to discussing this and seeing the options, and I think we should have that conversation. But, yeah, for, for me to respond to that, I, she, she did talk about that, but she said with attorneys and court dates, and who's scheduled where. It does take a lot of coordination, they're looking at the vehicles right now, so they are looking at some of those very things that you just brought up, so I know they'd be real amenable to sitting down and discussing.
And Brian, and Brian, maybe we could just do that by, by using that, our jail needs group to go over that.
Very good.
So, we have other counties who are interested in negotiating.
Yeah.
After our committee reports, we'll take a break. Chief?
Okay, let's see, last week, I had a greater farmland EDC executive committee meeting, and a lot of just updates in general business with that committee. Radio board, regional radio, or Northwest Regional Radio Board, kind of the same thing. We're kind of in the process of, of redoing how we operate, and, you know, what people are doing with that board, and so we're, that's kind of an ongoing process with that. Yesterday, I had Land of the Dats and Sky, the Area Agency on Aging, our meeting where all the counties are involved. We had that in Moorhead yesterday, and we had presentations by staff about things that are going on, but, you know, still a lot of concerns, at least in terms of programming for the elderly, what, what the cuts are going, what effect they're going to have, and what permanent effect they're going to have in the near future and, and well into the future. That was our discussion yesterday. That's it for me.
John?
Well, I have to go back two weeks, I wasn't around at all last week. We did have a Highway Tracking meeting after the last meeting, reporting that I was at on the 6th, but I presume all that's been talked about and moved on with since then.
That's one where I also had down, but I thought we canceled it.
Did we?
We did.
That one wasn't held, okay.
So we just penciled that off.
Okay. And then we did have a, had a, some meeting at the Historical Society that afternoon, and opened a new exhibit, and it's exciting to see the, the traffic flow. The, the, there's, it seems to be constantly increased traffic flow at the Historical Society, and the changing of exhibits brings in people now to, to see the opening of new exhibits in ways that I haven't remembered before, eh? So it's exciting to see that kind of thing. But after that, I was, I was gone until last night, I got, got back. This, this week, I've got, we've got things, got conflict tonight with the Planning Commission and, and this diversion meeting at Comstock, so I'm having to skip the Planning Commission tonight in deference to the diversion meeting. Tomorrow night, I've got conflict also with that meeting in Holly and the Historical Society Board meeting at the same time. So I guess I'm wondering if, I, I know Frank's going to vote that, and you're going to go, is anybody else, any commissioner interested or able to, to go to that?
What time is that at?
It's at 4:30 at the Garrick Theater in Holly.
I'm in a meeting at 3, and I don't know if I can get out the time to, if I can, I'll go.
Yeah. I'm not sure, is that something that, that David should be at?
Dave will be-
David, you're going to be at the Holly meeting tomorrow at the Garrick Theater, 4:30?
4:00, 4:30, I'll be there, yeah.
Okay.
That's our arbitration with the city and the county.
Well, no, I wouldn't call it that.
Well, it's a, a discussion. Okay. All right, thank you. So, we've got joint powers on Thursday in, in Menominee with the deal about water issues and so on, so, and Lakes and Prairies on Thursday night, we got, so, got a number of things this week. Potato Day is coming this weekend, encourage everybody to come to that in Barnesville, two days, Friday and Saturday, of lots of fun things. You can get in on exciting things like potato wrestling and whatever you want to do.
Are you one of the members there?
Well, I'm a citizen of the area.
Are you going to be potato wrestling?
No, no, I've, I've somehow managed to avoid that every year.
I would pay to come and watch that. Just think of the revenue that could raise.
Oh, we'll pass on that, thank you. And then the following week is, is steam thrashers, so we've got, we've got a number of things coming up for the communities.
Okay. Kevin?
The only meeting I had last week was the diversion meeting with the residents and the city council from Comstock. We, you know, we went in there and Terry Williams gave a report from the Corps on basically a real brief history as to how we got where we are today and why, why what we're doing is needed. And then the discussion turned to if Comstock were to have a ring levy put in place as a result of this staging area, the need for a ring dyke, how, what would they need? And, and of course, there was some discussion, and there were some that, you know, obviously don't like it, but we encouraged them to look at, well, if this thing does proceed and it were to go through, what would, what would you, what would you want and need out of the deal to protect your community? And so a, as the discussions went on, there became a lot of, a lot of questions and concerns about certain infrastructure. And I, and I said, well, that's exactly what we need to know, so that, because this is in a very preliminary design that they showed them. And as they move forward with a, with a more real, permanent design, if, if they don't come to the table and say what they need, how are we going to know what to design to, to make sure we take care of their needs? And I, I think the, and maybe Grant was there and Brian was there, and, and I think they did start to focus, and they did start to, start speak out of things, well, what about this, and what about that, and what about that? And we kept telling, I kept telling them, well, those are the things you need to put down, those are the things that you need to establish as a, you know, if you're going to put this on us, these are things you're going to have to do for us. And so the ball got started there, I, I just don't know after that meeting where it's going to go, and, and I think it's really important for that community to continue that dialogue and, and to understand what those needs would be, and, and, you know, just thinking out loud, I don't know, you know, from a county standpoint, I hope that we would encourage them, this isn't to say that, that, that project even going to go through or not, but, you know, if it moves forward, it'd be better for them to have that design in place now with their issues as opposed to having it fully designed, and then they miss something down the road that they wish they would have had. So, you know, I would hope that, that from a county standpoint, because they are in Clay County, real Clay County, and, and part of the impacts to our, our side of the river, that we would encourage them to keep moving forward with raising all of those issues and putting together, if this plan were to go through, what would they need to fully protect themselves, whether it's issues with the inside new development in the area, whether it has to do with their lagoons, how they're going to be dealt with. There was, I think the mayor is also maybe a landowner around there, you know, how to compensate, why, why was there, why is there a ditch around there, and what is the, what is the criteria for buying the land for all of that kind of thing? All, all those things are important issues, and, and I can only encourage them to not just sit back and, and wait for something. I think, you know, if you look at what Oxbow did, Oxbow did the right thing, you know, in terms of this process. They, they went through and they, they made it clear what they needed, and if this was going to be put on them, they were basically demands that had to be met. And I think that Comstock deserves that same right to have their demands met, so. That's the only meeting I had.
Frank?
Tuesday, I, we did the final interviews with the 4H position, so I, I haven't heard yet whether they've selected anybody yet or not. Wednesday, we had the Motor Vehicle Building Committee, which we'll be discussing here, I think, after the break, so we'll just refer to that. Thursday, I went to the, what we call the Health Pitch for the Family Healthcare Center, where people gave about a three to five-minute presentation, it must have been around 20 people that did that, to healthcare providers, new innovative ideas and stuff like that. Very interesting session the Family Healthcare Center put on, and it just, it was attended probably by, I don't know, 150, 200 people, it was just a very interesting session, all the new ideas they're coming up with for healthcare. Then also on Thursday, I went to FM Cog, and they're coming up with a session, I don't know if you read the letter to the editor today, Mark Simmons, the chairman of the board, there's a, on Tuesday, September 10th, and Wednesday, September 11th, there's a session coming up on Metro 2040, and, you know, and I think we have to get involved in that, if we've got any plans that we want to do in Clay County as far as in the next future, you know, what, what plans do we want to do? Where are we going with our stuff, and, or what do we want done? You know, because FM Cog can help us out quite a bit on that, so. Also, the Soil and Water Conservation District is planning a tour, and so Thursday, September the 12th, if anybody's interested to go on that tour, I've got information on that too, so.
On Wednesday, August 14th, Clay County Facilities Committee meeting, and I'll refer to Brian on that, he gives his report. Thursday, August 15th, Lake Agassiz Regional Library Executive Finance meeting, basically what we talked about was discussed by Liz Lynch today. Saturday, for Lake Agassiz Regional Library, for the Northern Lights Library Network Governing Board meeting, general business, we approved the fiscal year 2014 budget, many other areas were discussed and acted on, such as the network's defugic plan, and also the audit that is presented. and also the audit that is presently in progress. Monday, yesterday, the Area Agency on Aging, I attended that and Grant, of course, covered it. But there was also much discussion on hospital nursing facilities, health clinics and lead agencies. How will it be affected by the Affordable Healthcare Act? And lots of focus on new requirements facing counties, providers and also nursing facilities. Ryan, we'll get your update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I just wanted to throw out there too, when we were talking about the correctional facility in the meeting there. The Commissioner Nelson from Becker County, when he called me on Friday, he said, you know, don't necessarily forget about us when we're talking jails in the future. He said, you know, ours is getting ancient too. And I know we've gone that whole circle of regional things and stuff, he said, but, you know, maybe we could build a new one in Holly, he said, and share it. But I said, we'll certainly advise the board of that. So. Anyway, the, I attended a meeting last Wednesday in reference to the Metropolitan Food System Plan. And I think you had gotten an invitation to, Commissioner Everett. And that was, COG is involved in that and, and Public Health and a bunch of different others. And we had a lot of different ideas and things that were thrown around. And they're going to narrow their, their discussion points and, and bring it back to another committee even before they go to the boards and things. Because there was a lot of ideas thrown around about how you get fresh fruits and vegetables to certain neighborhoods and how do you encourage garden growth and things like that. It was, it was very, very good. The, we had a capital improvement meeting and we'll have that discuss what we talked about here in just a little bit. So we'll dwell on that. We had a central administration department head meeting, talked a lot about different things that are going on in the county. The Comstock diversion meeting, that was last Thursday night, it's already been talked about. The, I had an administrative diversion meeting last Friday. And I just, I think all of you are aware of it, it was in the news yesterday, that the Joint Powers Coalition of Richland and Wilken County did file a lawsuit against the diversion. And we have no knowledge of what that will happen there. So. We had an additional meeting on early acquisition because in regards to the diversion, because the, the diversion board is contracting with the Southeast Water Board in Cass County to do some of the early acquisitions and different things and getting definitely more engaged in, in the process. We've got that meeting tomorrow night out in Holly. We did a lot of budget work last week and it's been rolling for about a month or more now on it. And I guess I'll look at the vice chair, but that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to comment, thank, thank you guys for covering for me at that Comstock meeting. I wished I could have been there, but it sounded like things went as well as they could have. And we'll, tonight, hopefully, we can, we can deal with those outside of the city limits and, and how it affects farmsteads and so on. And I certainly have the same feeling that, that you have, Kevin, that we, you know, this is another thing that, this is a time when they, they need to get their requests in for whatever demands they have. Because, you know, we don't know if the project is gonna go, but if it does go, they, they'd better get the best deal they got out of it.
Well, and the important thing of that, John, is that the design for that protection, that community is going on now.
That's right, yeah.
And so they, so they need to incorporate their concerns into that current design. That's the issue.
Well, and the protection will be helpful whether or not the diversion happens.
And I thought Commissioner Campbell did an excellent job at that meeting too, of addressing their concerns with the citizens out there and trying to get that point across to them. So I thought you did a great job, Kevin.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We'll take a five minute break, which means we'll try to start at ten fifteen. Agenda that had been sent out by Vicki regarding the building program. Brian is going, Brian and Lori will bring up to us at this time.
Well, good morning again, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. What we want to talk about is the project we've been working on out at Motor Vehicle right now. So I do have a couple of handouts, but I just assumed talk about this and then we'll go to the figures on the costs and stuff. I guess you probably won't be able to hear me if I go to here, but I, I need to stand.
Can you talk into that?
Yeah. Because we want, I guess, the people to hear as well. Well, here is the drawing as of the last update of it. And it's gone to committee. We've, maybe I should go back just a little tiny bit for twenty seconds on history. This is the Motor Vehicle Department. We had discussion even whether that was a temporary location or not. And I think Commissioner Everett pointed out, he said, well, I don't know that that was ever really a planned temporary location where they're at. But the bottom line is they needed some improvements. We've looked all around the city as far as different locations. We've looked on campus for different locations. And I think the committee recommendation as of, of, I guess we didn't go that formal on it, but was to have the board look at what we have laid out in the, in the presentation that we're talking about here and then see where you guys wanna go. I think I'm gonna move over here. I don't wanna be in their way, but I don't wanna be in Georgia. And Robbie had done so much work on this. I don't wanna block them out from what we're talking about here. But this is what we've come up with after the committee has met and different things. Now, to see you get this straight, this is north going that direction. So this is the east parking lot where you enter the Motor Vehicle. The door is right here right now on Motor Vehicle. Everybody can kinda get it straight there. This is the current area that Motor Vehicle and Driver's License is in right now. What we're proposing is moving the testing, the testing, the driver's testing out of this area. And this would go into this garage stall that's, that's over to the north of the area. And this would be for the testing site. And in fact, and Georgia was talking with the supervisor at Motor Vehicle or in that Driver's License Services. And they are talking about adding another day to, to, yeah, to Morehead. I won't say it absolute. So, and that would be a very good thing. Frankly, they should be there five days as far as I'm concerned. This is a big city and we should offer a better service than three days a week for testing. But that's for another thing. So we are finishing or enclosing, we're proposing to enclose seven hundred and sixty square feet there. This would be the entrance to the testing site. And you can see that private testing area, ten locations for the computer testing that they do for the written test. And then staff would have an area and a little storage here. So, and then waiting area out here. So it's, I think, pretty efficient, seven hundred and sixty square feet for those, for that operation would be pretty good. Then what we're proposing is, first of all, a vestibule out front of this. So that when we can come in here and you'll have a clear line as to where you're supposed to go, some direction. If you're gonna be renewals, it's in here, testing, new testing, it's over here. Then as you enter here, we're changing this around, we're taking out this wall here that, that we're testing is located right now. And this would be just one huge open area with an office down here that is not there and then some storage area here. And this would remain pretty much the same. There's some changes here. But then we would use modular furniture to coordinate this off and allow freedom of movement of the employees behind here, whether they're working driver's license renewals or the motor vehicle work. And what we've talked about here is a more streamlined design for workstations. They'll have printers at their, at their desks that they will share. They will have individual cash stores, which is going to, and, and anything they need will be right at the workstation. And we certainly hope to improve some efficiencies with, with those kinds of things. We're looking at some partitions so that they have some privacy when they start talking about these driver's license renewals and they talk about social security numbers and dates of birth and different things. So. And we'll have a pretty darn adequate waiting area. But more importantly, an area where they'll see what's going on and we can direct them to wherever they need to go. And I think that's lacking right now. They come in that little hallway down here and they stand in line for a motor vehicle renewal when there's driver's license people in front of them that need to move over here. It's just not very clear right now. So we do have figures on the costs and things and I know you're very interested in that. But do you have questions about the layout and things along that line before we go to talking about figures?
I really like the, the fluonile. And I, we've made some changes from the first. We've got a, we've got an exit going to the north.
Yep.
Which we didn't have initially. I think we increased the size a little bit of the testing area for the first one.
Yep, yep, yep.
And that still does leave room for the Lakes and Prairie buses, doesn't it? Did we ever figure that out?
They have three buses right now, John.
They what?
They are down to three buses right now.
Yeah.
And I have communicated that to Joel's staff, but we still would be able to accommodate.
Good. I, yeah, I think the traffic, we could improve so tremendously with traffic flow on that thing by doing that. The parking, did we ever figure that out?
We, we have not addressed the parking yet. We felt that we need to get this done this fall, start this fall and get it done this, and then next summer, we'll need to look at the parking and the flow there. And we'll certainly utilize county engineers to assist us with that.
There's also stations for people to, clients to come in and stand and, and work at the table in the middle there.
Yes, yes.
In the middle, in the center there for?
Well, you're looking at here or here? This is kind of a renewal forms and, and then, yeah, yeah. And this, this, there may be some minor modifications to this. Because as we've talked, we've talked about, is this the best location for that backdrop on that photo? It might not be. Is this the right place to have the doorway? Should we have the doorway over here? And we push this against the wall for the photo site. It'll be minor modifications, but we just really needed to, we've been working with the architect on, on drawings of this. And we needed to, to tie it down this tight. I mean, every time you go over it, you can find a little bit of modification. I mean, it took us a little while when we were looking at the IT room. This is gonna be closed off and, and the IT room will be kind of that old entryway. And, but it'll furnish both sides very nicely that way. So.
Ryan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay here and maybe you can point, I, you know, and I, I, we have the private tests there in the testing area.
Right here.
What size is, what size is that? I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm pointing out here is if you go up to the very top line up there, way up to the top, which is the outside of our building, right?
Okay.
The big black line?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking for, for future, when the parking, as we, as we get more and more people coming in, both for renewals and for testing. And you get in the months of January, February and December when it's rather cold. I, I think it would be a good idea for us to, to have the future ability to have an entrance way to the north or way to the east.
That would come probably along here or something?
Exactly. Which then would require a potential hall there.
Yeah.
But then it would have to go into that private test room. I, I just think that, you know, how, right now in that vestibule area, we're kinda dictating which direction they should go, whether it's the purpose of testing or what have you. But you could also maybe in the future, as, as we grow, you could even have the parking sign designated, well, if you're here for testing, park over in that area. And then you would enter from the east up there. And then the, the low, actually where the amount of leased parking we have is, is what our current parking is. And then that could be more set aside for those who are going in for renewals. Yeah, you know, I think we gotta be thinking not only about what's good for today, but what might be good ten or fifteen years from now.
Right.
You know, when we have even more and more people coming in to, to use that facility. And I, I would just hope that our plan, I'm not suggesting we would need to do it now, but I think we'd need to have it designed so that if we were to use that, you keep in mind people who would, might have to park further to the east and further north. It would be easier access for them into the building as well. I just point that out.
Yeah. Good observations. And I know when we did originally look at developing this area, my thought was that these overhead doors would be the main entrance. But when the architect drew it up, he had a very nice public entrance here. The positive thing about this is that this, of course, wall runs north and south and this runs east and west. And in this old northwest wind in the wintertime, that's a pretty nice windbreak for anybody that does have to walk up here. Plus, I think Commissioner Everett mentioned it early on, which I think is a real strong consideration, which we need to really consider. And that is if we can put a driveway in here and have this one-way traffic flowing here and people parking diagonally here, that's gonna bring five, six nice close spots in here and a flow for people to be dropped off or picked up if they're, you know, have difficulty moving and different things. So. But, so, yeah, I think there's some real positive things. But, yeah, I guess that's a good point, you know, having that, that walkway there. Or even at some point in time, I don't know how it would be turned around, but if there was a entrance from that north side right there too. So.
Well, I just, I, I think there's gonna be a day when we're probably gonna wanna see an entrance.
Up there?
It might, it wouldn't have to be now, but, so then, you know, if, if you had that in the plan, you know, could that private testing room be just shrunk by that much or?
Yeah. You know, I think the private testing areas are mostly for maybe people that are probably hearing impaired, maybe need sign language or something along that line where they have to have a.
It's one-on-one?
One-on-one. Yeah, yeah. I know, believe it or not, way back in the day, I gave drivers tests and it was a long time ago. They didn't, they didn't have cars to drive, but, yeah. Is that what you were gonna say? Okay. With that, we'll move to.
The hitching post outside. Need a hitching post outside.
That's exactly right. That's right. Then let's go to the cost numbers. And again, I wanna point out to the top that this memo is from Robbie and Georgia. They've done an awful lot of work in coordinating this, working with the architects and with MINDOT, the Driver's License Division, and also keeping track of the expenditures. We were thinking in the area of two hundred and fifty thousand, at least Robbie and I were, and without the vestibule. And you'll see that vestibule does jump it up thirty-four thousand. But in committee, that was talked about and, and really felt that that would be a real important part of this remodeling project. So it's included in there, I think, from a windbreak, from a coordination and things like that. So the dollars are jumped up a little higher than what we were projecting. But you're seeing there in front of you about two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the remodeling project of this. This does not include the, the parking lot and the resurfacing of it. And then the modular furniture inside, we've got an estimated amount of seventy thousand dollars. We're hoping to do something better on that, but, but we certainly can't guarantee that. But we want a nice layout and a nice design. I think Nathan had given us a figure last year about the parking lot and that's what you'll see there. And drivers testing, Georgia had been, like I told you, in contact with them. And we expect to increase our rent by about fifty-five hundred dollars. In fact, they've committed to that. So, you know, over a period of ten years, that's fifty thousand dollars too. So that's, that's gonna be helpful in, in doing the improvements and, and keeping it up.
And this has all been through committee and?
Yeah.
Frank, staff were there and?
Yep, yep.
Looked, looked pretty good to us and announced coming before the board. And regarding the office furniture, when we act today, do you want that as part of it?
Well, we would hope to move forward with it. And then here, what you have is an update on the expenditures and what we feel is left. If you wanna go through it, we won't go through it now, but it shows all of the different things. We've talked about that before, all the different things that they've done. If you go to the back page, it'll show what the beginning funds were, about two point eight-three million. If you go to the back page, it'll show what the beginning funds were, about 2.83 million, spent to date about 1.7. We have obligated funds out there of about 1.47, I still think the roof bill has not been paid as an example for the motor vehicle building, but the remaining balance is about $430,000, and in fact, that's pretty darn exact, because we've accounted for about every penny of that.
That's exactly what the remodeling project cost.
Isn't that amazing? No.
Almost a penny.
Yeah. Well, if you add in the 60 and the 70, yeah, that's exactly right. So, I guess if you feel the project is worthy of moving forward, if it's part of our long-term capital improvement plans to improve the campus, we are going to do it as reasonable as we can. Robbie's going to be the general on this and coordinate with the mechanical and the electrical and, and the general contractors, so.
If I may, would the parking lot, 60,000 for the parking also be considered part of this at this time, to be done next year, of course?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, we're really not considering that at this time.
Okay, thank you.
We want to move forward with this, with the construction and the remodeling of this building, and we know that parking lot will have to go next summer, but we'll get there.
Gentlemen, any questions?
So, we're looking at about $370,000.
Right now with the furniture, yes, we are.
I, yeah, I would move that we proceed with this, I, I think it's a great plan, it's certainly needed, there's no question about it, and the fact that we've got that much money left in our capital improvement fund is perfect, so I would move that we proceed.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Kevin?
So, everything that we had intended to do with that original 2.283 million has been done, or we were, we've set aside the funds to complete them?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Yep. For a business? Yeah, I just, because we did receive some really good bids on something, through that process, that really came in lower than we had anticipated.
We did, and, and Mr. Chair, we've done so much more, for example, that plumbing within the courthouse on the north side and the drain, you know, they were 25 and 35,000 dollar bills, and we've done that within the capital improvement plan, and we've done the water heaters over at the, we did an additional project in the, in the juvenile center, so yeah, there's been lots additional things that have been done.
That, the, is that 41.5 in the LEC jail security, is that that 35,000 that we talked about today?
No, Mr. Chair, you go to the last page
Yeah.
and right at the top
Yeah.
of the page, it says 41.5 for the LEC.
That's what he was saying.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what he was asking.
Oh, okay, yes.
But, but I see that, that we were planning on using 35 of that 41 in our capital improvement.
Right, but what we're doing is doing the initial purchase of the 41, and then we're taking the 65, and the 65 is, is coming out of this year's budget, that'll go into the internal service fund, so that we don't run into this problem again. In other words, we will build the fund.
It's the annual contribution to, for replacement in the future.
Yeah, but, but on here, you really only need to show the 35, because that's what's going into the capital improvement fund, the other, the other 6,000 goes to the internal service.
No, but that's for replacement in the future.
Right.
So, we're using the whole 41.5
Purchase.
right now to purchase it from the capital improvement fund, and then
I see.
the remaining is coming for future replacement.
See, that's not replenishing the money, that's to build for the next time you purchase.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you feel that you can be building while still working in the space?
You know, we should talk about that. I'll just make it 30 seconds. What our intentions are, and we've talked about that extensively, that we hope this will be done first, and then we can move people in here, and it'll be tight, and it'll enough work, and then we'll do probably this section, maybe this for functioning for driver's testing, and then, so this will be done without too much interference, then we'll do one of these at a time, we even have a back end, if we need it here for the public, but we'll, yes, we, we, it'll be, it'll be a challenge, but we'll get it done.
In a few minutes, we'll go into closed session. A short break?
It's a dead one.
Yeah, I'm going to close the session for the purpose of performance evaluation of our county administrator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Harry?
Did we reopen the session?
Second.
Does all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried, is there is nothing else to come before the
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I just, you know, we, we went into closed session to do a review of our administrator, and I, I just want to publicly say that I thought the review went real well, and, and the consensus was, he's doing a terrific job for us, and thank him for his work. Thank you.
I think we all
Move adjourned?
We are adjourned.